Calling to order the Needham Select Board meeting for Tuesday, January 23. The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment. I have not been notified of any public comments, so I'm going to check and find out if there are any hands raised for this evening.
One hand raised. Joe Abruzzi.
Okay.
Hey there. Good evening. Am I connected?
You are on, Joe. So if you want to give your name and address and start, we're ready to hear you.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Joe Abruzzi. My address is 30 Bridle Trail Road. Just a quick question. About a week or two ago, I submitted citizens petition for the upcoming annual meeting for a warrant article. So I know that's been submitted to the town clerk and a copy went to the select board. I just wanted to ask that, A, did you receive it? And B, is it in good order? Or is there any issue or questions that I need to address or resolve?
The answer is the select board received it. I'm going to turn to the town manager.
It appears okay. The select board has the same article already in their list of warrant articles. So when we get closer to finishing, we should probably touch base with the citizens petitioners to see whether it's necessary, but we have already included that in our list as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No additional hand raised.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. And I'm looking, are we expecting people here or online?
We have on Zoom. I just promoted Edison Gutierrez.
Okay.
Joining us shortly.
All right. So we have a public hearing tonight related to the outdoor dining license for Seed Corp., which does business as Cook Needham. And there's actually two hearings. The first is for their outdoor dining license, and the second is for an alteration of premises, which is what's required if they're planning to serve alcohol outside, then we have to submit an alteration of premises to the state ABCC. So those are two matters that are open for public comment and discussion.
I'll try and fight him again. It says he declined. Oh, then we might be able to push one more minute.
Oh. Edison, we are hoping that you will accept and join us in the meeting.
Yep. Looks like that worked this time.
Perfect. And is Deborah there also? Deborah Paul? Or it says Deborah Paula?
Yes, we are here. Hello.
Hello.
Oh, you're both there. Hello, Edison. How are you?
Good. How are you today?
Good. We are always happy to have more people regularize their outdoor dining arrangements. So thank you for putting this plan together. If you just want to talk briefly to describe what your plan is for people, the materials are in here. I don't know that we're going to show them online, but people can find them in the select board packet. So. Edison, are you able to describe your plan, what you're planning to do outside?
Yes. Hello. How are you today? My name is Edison from Cook. I'm sorry to be in a hat today. It's my day off. Yes, we are planning to to get some space for outside since we everybody get used to get outside. And it's very important for us to give the option for our regulars, our customers to eat outside.
Okay. And usually by the time these plans have come to us, I'll just check with the town manager, they've already been to the planning board and they've been reviewed by other boards?
And the design review board.
Okay. And the design review board. Okay. Are there members from select or questions from select board members about the proposed arrangement?
Yeah. My God. Hey, Edison. Hey, Deborah. It looks like you've been to the James recently. It's a great, it's an interesting setup. I have no problem with it. My only question is just sort of how businesses, you say you have 14 employees, you expect to have a maximum of 14 employees. Do you find that people either are going to fill every seat indoor and outdoor, or do you think those people just migrate to the outdoors if it's a nice day? Like, how big a crowd?
Yes, it's most likely when in a good day, people migrate to outside.
Okay. Okay. So it's sort of either or?
It's either or. Yes, correct.
All right.
Yeah. Also, it's only on Friday nights and Saturday nights, we are able to fool the the whole, the whole house. But most on the weekday, if it's a nice day, everybody, 90% of the people choose to be outside.
Okay. All right. Thanks. And probably Babson's parents weekend will be packed, too.
Probably. Yes.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, Edison. Hi, Paula. I just want to ask, it seems to me like this space is the same footprint, but just a redesign. I just wanted to confirm that. Since I don't see.
Correct.
Okay. So you're just sort of squeezing more use out of the space you already have?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's true. And the way the policy was that you had to bring your specific plan for outdoor dining. So even if it was the same as people have already, they would need to bring it. Both true.
Yeah.
Okay. And Edison, I understand that you've also recently put in an airlock, two doors to get into the restaurant, which I heard people have appreciated as well.
Correct. Yes, we have so many complaints about how cold it is on this time and how hot it is in the summertime. So we have an architect who was able to design another door without make any any restrictions to to anybody, to the handicaps or to anybody.
Terrific. So I'm just taking advantage of the opportunity of having you here to let other people know that convenience has been put in as well. That's not part of your outdoor dining plan.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from board members? If there are not, then this is a public hearing. So I do open it to members of the public who would like to comment if there are any.
None online, Madam Chair.
Okay. If there are not any further comments, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
I move that the board vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Seed Corp. doing business as Cook Needham.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. All right. The next public hearing is also for Seed and Cook, and it relates to your alcohol license, an alteration of premises for an all alcohol license. And as I said, when we make these changes, if you will serve alcohol outside, we need to submit these premises changes. So again, I will ask the board if there are questions related to this alteration of premises for the all alcohol license. There's no changes in ownership, no other changes in responsibilities. It's just the alteration of premises. Right? And I can check with the town manager to say, is everything in order? Perfect. Any questions from the board? If there are not, then this is a public hearing. So I open the floor for questions from the public, either in the room or online.
No questions online.
Okay. If there are no questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board, that the board vote to approve the amendment for alteration of premises application received from Seed Corp., DVA Cook Needham, and vote forward the amendment application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Eduardo, we can get you back to your, to your day off. We're sorry to have interrupted it, but thank you so much for coming by. We appreciate both your being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Edison, thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you all.
Okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is, I think, our DPW update, but let me just double check. DPW update. So we have Karis and Shane here. I don't know if both of you are coming up. Are you both coming up? There's no reason to be in the peanut gallery, Shane. You can. Yes. You should just join the board. You're here to every need.
So finally able to catch up and provide an update of our summer work from 2023. Feels like we've had a lot going on that sort of pushed us back. But I just wanted to provide an update. I gave an initial presentation on what our plans were for the construction season and just wanted to show you what we were able to accomplish over the season and and items that may have been delayed because of other projects that came up. So for this particular year, I think we've been able to work on a pretty significant backlog of projects that sort of were backlog from COVID and transitions and leadership. And we got a pretty significant volume of work done. The other major challenge we had this year was dealing with staffing challenges in public works. I think this time last year, we had 18 or 19 vacancies in DPW. Right now, we have four. So that's a pretty significant difference. We've also created our own internal training program for commercial drivers licenses, and we've had three individuals pass through that program, and we have three more that are currently going through that program. So helping to create the pipeline for new employees coming in as we are preparing for some of our more seasoned staff to retire in the next year or two, making sure that we have that succession plan in place. We had some weather challenges this particular year. On one end, though, consistently wet weather is an impediment for construction. So it did delay some of our projects, some of our relining projects and paving projects. And then just the response to the flooding in August has redirected a significant amount of DPW's focus and efforts over the past few months. And right now, we're kind of preparing for 2024 and the construction season that we have coming. And right now, we're looking at at least $15 million of the projects that we plan on executing over the summer, which would be one of the larger project loads that we've had. And some of those have some pretty significant deadlines related to ARPA funding and making sure that we get them substantially completed by the end of the fiscal, the end of the calendar year. So I did want to touch on, because I think one of the reasons I've been here so frequently is talking about stormwater, touch on stormwater, the work that we've been doing in DPW, because that's been so significant as far as a time commitment. Right now, we have done 20 hood, 21 neighborhood meetings. Now, these are not meetings with our staff. We have had hundreds of meetings with our staff with residents. So these are focus meetings that we've had in concentrated areas where we have had multiple individuals impacted by flooding. They have been multidisciplinary, so they have involved people from DPW, water sewer engineering, the building department, the town manager's office. And we've really been trying to discuss sort of all facets of how to approach high intensity rain events in in those neighborhoods. So part of the intent has been to understand exactly what happened during that event. Like, why did that property flood? What were the circumstances? Where did the water come from? How quickly did it dissipate? We've been trying to do these single meetings to kind of create one point of contact for an entire neighborhood. It's obviously helpful to know not only how the water moved in one house, but how it moved through an entire neighborhood. We've also had conversations about how to best mitigate water issues on both public and private property. We feel like it is a joint effort and not one that can be solved solely in one arena or the other. But also conversations about the limitations that we might have with public infrastructure, even if we were to develop that fully, to make it clear that there's no promise I can give anyone that their property won't flood. We can just try to harden our infrastructure as much as possible and encourage residents to continue hardening their properties as much as possible. And I think one of the things that we heard is feedback pretty consistently was that people wanted transparencies. They wanted to understand what we had done in their neighborhoods, what we were planning on doing, how we respond to events. And there was a deep understanding that these were not simple issues to solve. There were a couple, you know, obvious items that we saw with how maybe a house basement was designed or with some curbing that we could lift. But for the most part, these are pretty complex issues. Almost all the homes that we went to are in a low point within the town with poor draining soils. And so they also tend to be more inland is the best explanation, but further away from the river. So there's a lot further for the water to go in order to make significant improvement for their their area than if they were, you know, the other areas in the community. So it's not a quick fix. This is really a long term fix. And so what we have committed to and will be rolling out at the end of this month is a landing page on the website that will be focused specifically to water capacity issues. So again, we're dealing with stormwater that comes from weather events or groundwater and how we convey that through the town. We'll provide some updates on what we've done. I think there was a misunderstanding that we had not invested funds into our town infrastructure for stormwater, which is not the case. So we'll be providing, you know, a landing page that will show all the work we've done largely in the last decade in terms of improving our stormwater capacity. We'll be providing an update of what our response plan will be when we have an event. I know that's been an area of a lot of stress, and I echo that sentiment. I know whenever I see rain in the forecast, I personally get get stressed as well at this point. But trying to provide some assurances that we do have a response plan in place. We have certain areas that we know that are more prone to flooding, and those are the areas that we go to to make sure that those catch basins are taking in as much flow as they can. And to provide an update of what our capital plan is, we do have stormwater pretty much in every year of the five year capital plan for capacity improvements. And then when we do the stormwater capacity study that we had approved at the last meeting for ARPA funding, which we were starting to engage in now, having a landing page for what that process looks like, what information we have, and what that plan looks like, because it will be multi-phased, it will be complicated, and it will be expensive and long. So really, I think what I was hearing was when events have happened in the past, they have heard from members of the town that will fix the problem, but they haven't really had any updates or understanding of where we were in the process. So I think providing that level of transparency will be really helpful.
And Karis, I'm just going to stop you because I think, I think we need to be very careful because you talked about them hearing when we're going to fix the problem. I don't think we believe that all of these problems can be fixed when you have 10 inches of rain on frozen ground and the Charles River is already full and overflowing. Right? This this is one of the realities of climate change is that even as far inland as Needham is, we see the impact of water.
Yeah. So I think when I should have clarified what I meant by problem, but I think we have certain areas in the community where we do have, again, everything happens in New England organically, where we have multiple systems coming into one bottleneck, for example, or we have many systems in town by developers that were open systems and put a pipe, and then it comes out of a pipe, and then it goes back in a pipe. Those are the types of things that I think we're looking at on the town side to resolve. But yes, I agree. There's only so much, so much, so many, so many contingencies we can assume that our system will be able to absorb. And I think that's where that dual responsibility of hardening personal property as well as improving the town drainage system will be helpful. And we'll also have on that landing page recommendations for individuals on how to both harden their properties so their basements are less prone to flooding, but also improvements they can make on their property to store water and move the water away from their house and into their yard, which is really where you want water in an event like this. I know it's inconvenient for people to have their backyard flooded for a day, but it's a lot better than having their basement flooded. So I think one of the, you know, things we're kind of transitioning out of is this reactive mode. So we spent a lot of time with reactive communication, and unfortunately, I think that's taken away from some of our capacity to actually do proactive work, right? When your staff is chasing down insurance claims and meeting with residents on a regular basis, they then can't also be designing and and working on improvements. So we're sort of transitioning out of that phase of sort of reactive to more proactive, and we'll be coming out with some standard messaging, I think, that will be helpful to indicate where we're going and having information available on the website, I think, would help alleviate some individuals' concerns. So that's sort of where we are with stormwater capacity. I will say that the staff is a little bit fatigued, I think, at this point, as far as the response goes. You know, we have, we don't have a 24 hour operation, and when we have events at night, we are bringing staff in in order to make sure we can mobilize quickly if we have any issues. I think I've mentioned before, we have over 4,000 catch basins, and on our full stay, we have about 90 staff. So if you think about it, we really do feel like this is a collaborative effort. So I don't know if you have any questions specifically about that before I move on to the really good fun stuff that we got to do this year?
I would add, I think of all the 21 meetings that have been held, everyone at those meetings wants DPW to move on and start, like, if they've heard it, the message is delivered, now please, yeah, go on and let's fix this.
Yep.
Yes. I guess I would just like to say to all of the residents in town that this is, this is climate change. Like, this is climate change coming to Needham. And in addition to doing what you can to harden your yard and your property, I think we all need to think about all of the other changes that we need to make as a society to help stall this problem. And it's only going to get worse from here if we don't make the changes to our homes and our commercial properties, changing out our fossil fuels, et cetera, et cetera. So when you think about the water in your basement, relate it to the big picture, because that's, that's what will help stop the cycle at this point. It'll just keep getting worse, and we all need to be prepared for that and to take part in both the mitigation, but also the solution.
I also don't want to leave this topic again without saying thank you to everybody on the staff, because I know it's not just you who is breaking out in a sweat every time rain is in the forecast in January with the ground frozen, that it has gotten to be traumatic, I think, for everybody. So I appreciate the hours and hours and hours of work that you have put into trying to do your best to keep the town and residents and their homes as safe as they can be. So shake that.
Thank you. And I'd echo, it's the entirety of public works. This impacts our highway division, our water sewer drains division, our parks and forestry. This is the weather and the related issues that it has caused for the community have impacted every single division within DPW.
Great.
Good stuff. Right. So these are the projects that we got accomplished in the last year. On the highway side, we actually had initially planned on doing a double rubber chip, which is the treatment that we do to roads that is somewhat controversial from the, you know, person driving over it, because it can be a little bit bumpy. We had an application from a year ago on several streets that failed to take properly effectively the products, and it never solidified. And so in the very hot temperatures, again, not something we're always used to in New England, the product actually wasn't as stable as we had wanted it to be. So we took a break from that particular product for a year because we wanted to work with the company who makes it to find a solution. We've never had this issue before. So we were trying to figure out, was it the time of year, the application process, the mix that we had in that particular day? So we took a break from that. We're still looking at doing some rubber, double rubber chip next year, but we're actually going to start piloting a few other road treatments that have come out in more recent years and been used in neighboring communities to see if they might be a better supplement. They are slightly more expensive than the double rubber, but they have a more polished finish, and they're certainly significantly cheaper than paving. So we're going to start with these two roads where the product failed. We're going to try those as a pilot to see how that product works over one to two years, and then see about potentially switching out that product in the future. We still proceeded with microsurfacing on our main roads. And if someone asks you why we have chosen to do rubber chip on one road and micro on another, because micro is a much gent, like nicer treatment, and the reason is it has to do with the structure of the road. So if the road was an engineered road and a main, usually it's a main road that we have, it was constructed correctly, and the road doesn't move very much. So the micro, which is a firm product, will stay and not delaminate. If you put micro over some of our other roads in town that were not necessarily engineered quite as well, the road moves, which is fine. But then the product will delaminate, and it actually looks worse than if you had done nothing at all. So that's why we use different treatments in different locations. It has to do with how that road was originally engineered. We had a paving program this year that was also interrupted, unfortunately, by primarily by Eversource Work. So Eversource, we've been working much more in conjunction with them over the last year, which has been positive. The downside is because of this exchange of information, we gave them the list of roads we were going to pave this year, and those are the roads they decided to replace main in. So the good news is they didn't do it one year after we paved, but it did delay several of our projects. So these roads have been prepped by our staff, and they're all ready to be repaved next year, and largely on Eversource's dime, which I think is a positive. So we are making sure to collect from Eversource as much as possible when they're interrupting our roads. If they were already planned to be repaved, they have a budget line item for doing the trench repairs. We are going to be collecting that budget line item to help offset the cost of our paving. On sidewalks, we did a significant project on Central Ave, which extended the sidewalk towards the Horse Farm and then towards Country Way. We are looking right now into a raised path, I guess, that we're going to try to to use to connect the two sections of Central that are currently disjointed. There's a, I think, a, for a lack of a letter term, a cow path that sort of goes there that's below grade significantly and would not meet ADA requirements. So we need to raise the grade up. And so we're looking at maybe using a similar treatment to what we have for the path over at the reservoir with helical piles to build like a boardwalk to connect those two sections. The idea would be obviously to try to create as much interconnectivity that anybody could use between one section of town and another. We also had a project at Tower Ave that I think I had presented last year with a couple different options, and we have a consultant right now working with us on finalizing it. This year, like as in the last two years, we still have a chance, a challenge getting cur, radius curb, granite radius curb. It's a product that is manufactured pretty much in the United States. While we have labor shortages, particularly in physical fields, we're finding that you have to place orders much further advanced. So we've already placed our orders for the work that we have planned for next year. But this year, it did delay a few projects, including that one. One project that we did that had come up was narrowing a section of Webster Street from South to Fox Hill, adding an RFB, significantly adding more permeable surface to that area, narrowing the road for safety, and then creating more pedestrian connectivity. The other side from Fox Hill on Webster, the sidewalk literally just disappeared into the road. So now it has a properly defined sidewalk with ADA accessible ramps. So that project's being closed out. We are still struggling with Eversource getting them to put in new meters for us so we can connect the RFB, because there's not enough solar in that location in order to have a solar RFB. As soon as that is set up, we will be able to activate that system. And the surprise project that we had for the year was a renovation of the Needham Heights Common. That's a project that had been actually on our Parks and Forestry Ed Wilson's radar for a while as an item that had issues. The pavement was in really poor condition. They were tripping hazards. We'd actually had to build the pavement up, and so the pavement was above the curb line. And the, because we had to push several projects off, we had some funding available, and the contractor that we work with on the sidewalks wanted to keep some staff on through the Thanksgiving holiday and was looking for some small projects. And this sort of came up as a perfect opportunity where we were able to make all the sidewalks and the pathways fully ADA accessible. We're currently working on refurbishing some benches that will go back, so they will be nice. They will be a parking pad next to the benches, so somebody with a stroller or wheelchair can sit, and we'll be putting Big Bellies in that area. So I know that's a particular area of town where they have indicated that they were looking for a little bit more of the creature comforts for a downtown environment. And so this is sort of, I've sort of said it's like a high-low year when it came to how we renovated Commons. We sort of have the town common, which is the high, sort of everything developed and thrown at it. And then we have the low, which is just a few small improvements that we've made, and the Heights Common that I think has been impactful. And so that was sort of a quick turnaround project from both start to finish. On the water sewer drains and parks, there was several projects that were closed out this year. We closed out the Marked Tree Water Main Project, including repaving sections of Mark Tree and Central Ave. We finished the Walker Pond Phase One. This is actually the picture of the Pollinator Garden in an area that was pervious surface before that we took back and made it impervious surface. It's one of the best management practices for water treatment. And we're in the design phases for the second treatment phase of Walker Pond. We finished the water main replacement on Rosemary Street, which was removing the pipe that was running underneath Rosemary that could potentially leak, and we would never know it because it's a lake, and deactivated that and restored that. And we have designed and bid the ARPA project for the 128 Interceptor Sewer, a $3 million project for an area that has insufficient sewer project for an area that has insufficient sewer capacity in, in that area that takes a lot of the industrial waste. And then finished the Lake Drive project. On the drainage, we completed the first phase of Concord at Burnside and we will be completing the second phase of Concord at Burnside. Again, that was a project that I think initially had been envisioned as a relatively small cost-wise project, and we're finding that because of the availability of steel pipe as well as the just cost of construction have increased, and the size of the pipe is significant for shutting the road down, that doing these projects has been a little more complicated than I think was originally envisioned 10 years ago. McLeod Field, which is renovated to be the varsity premier girls softball field, is 90% complete and is on track to be open. There was also a drainage project embedded in that as we had an old drain that ran underneath the field and was causing sink holes in the field. So we've repaired the drain and then we've also repaired the field. The common was completed. And we had a few projects. We did replace 104 lead or lead-lined services in town as part of our lead replacement program. We have a small diameter water main replacement program that was delayed a year largely because of the staff that would have been doing that program. And house was redirected towards flooding response. And the same with our brick and culvert cleaning program. You can't get into a brick and culvert if it is filled with water, so we have to wait for the flooding to subside in order to work on that program. On the fleet, the two main projects is we're currently working on a GPS upgrade. The GPS system we used before has been discontinued and we're working on looking at a new product that will help provide us some more data for our snow and ice removal program. We've been piloting it and it's helpful as far as double checking to make sure that our vehicles have been on all the, the streets and you can kind of leave breadcrumbs so you can see how long it's been since you've been in a particular area. It's been very helpful in terms of dealing with things like mailbox, you know, mailboxes being hit and, and other items. We can verify if it's our pieces of equipment or our contractor's pieces of equipment or somebody's plowing company's piece of equipment. So it's been helpful for insurance purposes. We've had a significant number of vehicle replacements. It's still a difficult market for buying new pieces of equipment. We're buying them off the lot mostly and then customizing after the fact. But I think we had talked several months ago about the purchase of equipment for the Building Department, and we ended up transitioning that plan and we purchased four all-electric Chevy bolts and one plug-in hybrid SUV for that division. And we are in the process of procuring two all-electric trades vans for the Building Maintenance Division. I would say part of it is based on our environmental goals. I will say part of it is based on availability. It happened to be that those were the two vehicles on the lot. Our preference would have been to buy an all-wheel drive vehicle. They have just started making them in these transit vans, but unfortunately, everybody else is trying to buy them as well. So because of the age of our equipment, we wanted to, we felt like it was good to pursue purchasing these all-electric pieces, as well as we have purchased numerous vehicles for the Public Works Department. And then I don't have a before picture and I think you just think like the scene from, if you think like the scene from Carrie, that might be with the Pollard locker room.
I was in there a lot.
Yeah. So you would agree?
Oh, would I?
Yeah.
It was something.
So this is a project that we undertook, which was the replacement of the Boys and Girls Locker Room, as well as creating a gender-neutral locker space at the Pollard School. That project was finished shortly after school reopened. They also worked on replacing two boilers at the high school and one boiler at the Mitchell with can, high-capacity condensing boilers before they were the old traditional steel boilers. So there's some energy efficiency there, as well as updating systems that were no longer functioning. So that is really the high-level look at the projects that were accomplished by the Public Works Department over the last construction season. For the next season, like I said, we have $15 million worth of projects. Some of the larger ones are the Interceptor Project, Walker Pond, Claxton Field is a fairly significant project. We have, I think it's an $8 million Water Main Replacement Project on South Street, and then dredging the reservoir, including best management practices to improve the condition in the reservoir in Alderbrook. I'd also add that our Engineering Department has taken on support for all of the Park and Recreation projects that are being conducted. So the tot lot and other things, we felt like the skillset that the Engineering Department for project management fit better within the Engineering Department. So they're providing that service to the Park and Recreation Department. There's a lot of surveying work, a lot of construction work and a lot of project, construction management work. And then just a reminder that the Building Maintenance Division provides support for all the building-related projects. So not only do they have their own construction projects, but they provide consultation to the PVBC to make sure that the buildings that we're constructing can be easily maintained into the future and that we're properly prepared for that. And I would say sort of in addition to what we had been planning this year, there is the Stormwater Master Plan, which is a newer endeavor. We were planning on doing it anyways, but we weren't planning on doing it until 2026. That will be entering, you know, Public Works' work plan as well as work for the quiet zone. And then on top of that, we have a fairly significant downtown renovation project that we're hoping to get started with presentations in the next month to the select board from the four design committees that we have engaged with to give us some concept plans on what a new downtown could look like.
I think you didn't add the, the design of the new building, the Public Works project.
Yes. I think that's why I have the picture there, was to remind me Phase One of.
Which will require a lot of Public Works effort.
Yes.
And, and did I, quiet zones there, right? Yeah. I was going to say all the different things I'm thinking.
So that's all?
That's all.
So these slides were not in our packet. Will they get added to the packet? Are we going to put them up on the DPW site? I feel like all of this information should be available to people. You've done such, I mean, there's always a lot of work, but there's a huge amount of work that has been going on and is expected in the upcoming year. So we should definitely make it available so people can see it.
Thank you. Other questions? Is every, did everybody breathe after Karen finished saying all that?
Not happening.
Yeah. That has happened. Yeah. Thank you to you and the department. It's really impressive. I did not know that rose could delaminate, but this remarkable work, you guys have been extraordinarily busy. Thank you.
It's amazing. I do have a couple of questions just to clarify. First of all, like I'm overwhelmed just listening to this litany of tasks that you have all completed. It's just amazing. So thank you. I'm thinking that you should really run for office, like take care of everything. So I just have a couple of minor questions. The, the new chip treatment that you're working on to pilot, is there any chance that that could be lighter in color?
Do you want to talk about that?
Is that a hot topic?
No, we've had that question before.
It's typically not lighter in color just because the emotions that they use to stick. So it'll be a dark color, but it's a different type product that should hold up much longer than the rubber chip. And then on top of that, much smoother ride for the residents as well.
So obviously the reason I ask is, you know, to mitigate the heat island, heat absorption, and therefore our whole climate change situation. So I just, I know that there have been some revolutionary treatments, but I guess it's not mainstream just yet. You showed a, you showed a slide with the trucks. I'm just curious, and the heavier trucks had numbers in front of them and I don't know what they go to. Can you? They clearly weren't numbers of trucks because one of them was 713.
They're the number of the trucks. So I will say, I'm laughing because the naming, the numbering system for our vehicles is 30, 40 years old at this point and wasn't, initially they assumed that each division would, I don't know how many people they had when the DPW started, but they only assumed like a certain number of vehicles. So we've had to like add numbers in. We have a plan, I'm hoping, when the new branding work is done, since we would have to pay to re-icon the, the vehicles, that that's a great time to re-number our trucks. One of the things we've talked about, like logically, it would be helpful for like, to have the division on there somewhere. So like Highway One, you know, would be your superintendent's truck and we could work our way down because we're running out of numbers, to be honest. But it's not the number of trucks, it's the truck number. And then the description afterward is the type of vehicle that we purchased. So from heavy dump trucks to sidewalk tractors, we've been purchasing. I think we had 24 vehicles that were funded this year, which is a lot of vehicle purchasing.
So the truck number 10 was the truck that you both got to write in during the storm.
Really big and awesome. And surprisingly cushy in there. It was really nice. And then my last question is, we were just at the Mass Municipal Association Conference, and one of the things that Governor Healy mentioned was that somehow they had worked out a deal to stop with the double poles. And I would just wonder if you could explain that to me a little bit because that's new information to me.
So it was new information to me at that meeting, probably the only, well, not the only group of people that would get really excited about enforcement on double poles. I can at least talk about the process and why we have them now. So Verizon in Needham owns most of the poles in town, but the actual utilities that are on the pole are owned by the various, so Eversource owns the electric and then you have all the different cable companies and, and all that. So when you need a new pole, like if you're widening a road or adding a bike lane or widening a sidewalk, you have to put in an order to add the new pole from Verizon. And then Verizon has to put an order in with all the utilities to move the utilities over. There's one pole that we saw in the corner of May and Highland, and I had not looked up to, like up there, but we were doing a walkthrough in the downtown and I looked up and there had to have been 50 different lines that were on that particular pole. So each one of those has to get moved from the old pole to the new pole. They put in work orders and I believe it has to be done bottom up, so they end with electric. As you can imagine, working with that many utility companies, it can be really time-consuming and it's not, there's no incentive on Verizon to get them to do it quickly. So my understanding is that they're going to give us a mechanism financially to pressure the Verizon to get those companies to move those over sooner, so that way we can remove the old pole.
Okay. And so the impact of having two poles is that the sidewalk may not be handicapped accessible anymore or because it's taking up room in the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So do we expect this to have a big impact here? I mean, I have personally noticed.
There are certainly, there are certainly locations that we know of that are problematic. And I would say it's almost, when we think about things like road widening, it's almost a disincentive to do a project like that because you have to go through the hassle and then there's no incentive to make it happen. So I could see there being, with a positive impact for the pole transfers that we're still trying to have happen, but also potentially on projects where we want to alter the right-of-way. Where now, because Verizon has an incentive to move things more fast, we might be more inclined to make a modification than we would have before. Before, we would basically try to work around the existing poles as much as possible because there's a cost and then even if you pay the money, it doesn't necessarily happen in a timely fashion. But in the interim, yes, we have some areas where we have double poles that are limiting the right-of-way or our ability to work on the road. So there's an advantage. I don't know if it's like groundbreaking for Needham, but it would certainly be helpful.
Great. Thank you. And then just one last, thank you to everyone involved in the department because it seems like you've had an extraordinary amount of pressures this past season. And so we appreciate everything you do.
Absolutely.
The, all the coordination for the spring work, we had talked about involving the Mobility Planning Committee and in, in doing that, will there be a session with them to go through this detail for the spring so that members of the public have a chance to like see how it's all rolling out and exactly which streets are involved and that type of thing?
Yeah. So I believe as part of that charter, we had like one meeting that was going to happen twice a year. One in the fall in putting our capital plan together and one in the spring. So we have a meeting in March. I will talk to the chair and see if that makes sense to have that as a more publicly published meeting and we can certainly share our capital plan. Obviously you can see the challenges sometimes. There's always an apprehension about saying the roads we're going to pave because then people get excited about their road being paved and then something happens, Eversource some, you know, and so it's not always a guarantee. But we could certainly do that as that part of the forum, talking about all of the components that would affect the right-of-way for transportation.
Okay. I, I just think the whole rolling out that way and giving it more visibility and visibility to the fact that in fact, there's a lot of planning that goes into this, because most people miss the planning completely and think this happens magically at the last second. And that's really not true. There's actually a path and we're working our way into certain things. So I think giving visibility to that is helpful. Great. Kathy?
Yeah. Just very quickly, thank you both, all of you, the whole department, not only for all the hard work, but I just, all the thoughtfulness and the innovation, you know, you guys really come up with all these creative solutions and I'm very grateful and I know the town is grateful.
Until next time.
Is it snowing yet?
It is.
It was. Yeah.
It was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just so people know, we're going to have snow and we're going to have rain and the ground is still frozen, just FYI. Yes.
Madam Chair, can we move the consent agenda and the appointment calendar?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Oh, can I just make a discussion though?
Now, yes.
I'm happy to see the exchange clubs brought the joy celebrations coming up. Good. Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report.
Quite a few items this, this week.
It's a big week.
The first is to ask the Board to accept and refer zoning from the Planning Board. The Planning Board met last week and voted to put two items on the warrant for the May Annual Town Meeting, the Affordable Housing District and the map change, and this is to enable the Linden Street project. The Board has, the Select Board has 14 days to accept the proposed amendments and refer them back to the Planning Board for review, hearing and report. I would note that the Planning Board is taking up at its next meeting, completing solar, the solar bylaw, zoning bylaw amendment, and that will be on the Board's February 13th agenda to refer back. So that you'll refer them back, they'll hold a hearing on the Affordable Housing District and then they'll hold a hearing on the solar and they will end up in the annual town meeting, unless there's a delay in either and then they could end up in the special.
And this is a ministerial act that we go through. We will have the opportunity to comment whether you wish to at the public hearing or when they come back to present this article to us after they've had their public hearing. So I would welcome a motion. Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to accept the proposed zoning articles titled Article One, amend zoning bylaw, Affordable Housing District, and Article Two, amend zoning bylaw, map change for Affordable Housing District, for referral to the Planning Board for its review, hearing and report. Any further discussion? These articles are both important to the goal that we share in furthering, making this project happen. So they're necessary, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Madam Chair, back for a second hearing is the ballot question to remove the Fire Department from civil service. And the proposed form of motion is shall the Town of Needham revoke its acceptance of Chapter 31 of the General Laws relative to the Fire Department and thereby remove the Fire Department from civil service? I note, Mr. Keane, there's only one word of in this version compared to the prior version. Town Council thought the cleanest way was to reuse the exact language, but upon reflection agrees that this is inappropriate use.
So much better.
I prefer Leo. Sorry, Katie.
So we have a suggested motion in front of us that the Town Manager has largely read. And people in town will recall that we went through this process a year ago in the spring for the police and now we are doing this for the fire, in both cases at the request of those unions as we work with them, that this is the path they would like to have forward. And the town does have the ability to leave civil service via a vote. So that is the path forward for us. Otherwise, we could ask the State House to do it. We have done that. The State House has not acted on any of those requests over the last few years from cities and towns. So if I could have a motion on this one or discussion, if people feel they want to talk about the wording more or something else.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to place the following question on the ballot for the 2024 Annual Town Election. Shall the Town of Needham revoke its acceptance of Chapter 31 of the General Laws relative to the Fire Department and thereby remove the Fire Department from civil service?
Yes or no?
Yes or no? Second.
I would hate to leave off the choice.
Your guess is a guess.
All right. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Thank you. The next item we have is the RTS Services Policy for Low-Income Houses and Residents.
So this is the policy we discussed last week, which would modernize the procedures for distribution of the pay-and-you-throw bags for residents in need, and it would also offer some services to residents impacted by locally declared emergencies. And this is an example of a policy that we could place on the website under the flooding page that the Director of Public Works was talking about, just so people know that they have options if something, if it locally, if an emergency is declared locally.
Any further questions? We had a look at this last week, or two weeks ago.
Madam Chair, just a comment. This actually, I think, was around, but is people connecting the dots. There was a public comment about this issue in a meeting a few months ago. So it's nice to see that this is back here, and we're going to hopefully pass it.
Yep, it did prompt us taking a look at this and realizing it had been a very long time since we had looked at this, so, exactly. All right, a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board adopt the proposed update to SB Fin 004, RTS Services for Low-Income Households and Residents Impacted by Locally Declared Emergencies.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. The next item is the amended Community Benefit Agreement for Sierra Naturals.
So the Board entered into a host community agreement, Community Benefit Agreement with Sierra Naturals when the Board provided a letter of non-opposition to the location of a registered marijuana dispensary in Needham quite a few years ago now. And state law has since changed, rendering the agreement that we had unenforceable. And so Town Council has worked with Council for Sierra Naturals to provide the agreement that is provided here, and I recommend its adoption. The big change is there was some significant money provided to the town for the first few years, and now any reimbursement, anything would have to be essentially a reimbursement for actual costs incurred by the town, and the departments that oversee, the RMD, have indicated that there really haven't been lately expenses that would qualify at this point.
And I'd just point out for the benefit of anybody listening that the agreement was due to end in two years in any case. So this is just for the balance of the remaining two years.
Any further discussion about this? If none, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign the amended Community Benefit Agreement between the Town of Needham and Sierra Naturals, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Might note, Madam Chair, that the town did receive approximately $750,000 over the life of the agreement, so there was, there was value in the agreement.
At the time, yes. All right. The next item on our discussion list is ARPA, as we continue to look at and allocate our ARPA funds.
So this is a proposal for reallocation in the state portion of the ARPA. As we talked about at your last meeting, due to the budgetary 9C cuts that Governor Healy made, the town lost half of its funding for the Town Seal and Branding Committee, and we had already undertaken a procurement process and have, in the process of engaging a consultant to do that work, helping us redesign the seal and also create a brand. And so we're short $17,500 for that effort, given the reduced. So we propose that, given that the branding portion is, we consider public art, that we would reallocate some of the funding in the economic development area. The, we did leave the balance that NCAC was looking at, which is approximately $4,000, to do some additional work, and the Economic Development Manager will work on spending the balance of the economic development funding by the end of this year. So the request is to essentially provide the $17,500 for the Town Seal and Branding Committee.
Any discussion?
Sounds good to me.
Madam Chair, I move the Select Board vote to approve the revision of the ARPA proposed budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We've been, we have to spend the state's portion of the money this fiscal year, so we're trying to ramp that up. And so the committee actually has a meeting tomorrow, and we've, and we'll, as of tonight, engage the consultant. We'll be there, so.
All right. The next item on the agenda is to place the position of the Town Clerk on the April 9th Town Election Ballot.
This is a late item. Madam Chair, the Town Clerk has indicated that she intends to step down at this election.
I think she's actually sent us the note, so it's no longer an intent.
Well, she intends to step down. She hasn't, yes, fair.
She has sent us.
With a date. So as such, we're asking that the Board put the unexpired term of the Town Clerk, which expires April 8, 2025, on the ballot, and asking you to do that tonight so that anybody who's interested in running for that office can take out nomination papers and get started. Otherwise, this is a cycle in which your next meeting is three weeks away, and that would be a hardship. The nomination papers are due February 20th.
Right. Any questions for discussion?
Yeah, just a thank you to Teddy Eaton for years of service, and the job has gotten remarkably complex. We have early voting, we have absentee voting, voting by mail. I think we went all the way back. She's started with Vapiris, but she's been there a long time serving the town, so it's appreciated.
We also appreciate that she's offered to sort of hang in there on a part-time basis because we have a lot of elections coming up this year.
Yes.
And somebody new will need to learn them, exactly.
I'm sure we'll have plenty of opportunities to thank the Town Clerk for many years.
We will.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board vote, vote place the unexpired term of the Town Clerk ending April 8, 2025 on the 2024 Annual Town Election Ballot.
Second.
Can I just ask one question about this? So we're putting just the last year of her term on, and then whoever runs this time would have to run again.
Next year.
Next year, okay. To keep it on the same cycle. We're not adjusting this.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. The next item on the agenda is FY 2025 Budget Presentation. Everybody's coming to the table?
Chair, I think that the work that goes into the budget is done by a lot of people, particularly people at the table, so I thought it was just really important that they be here to help present. And I noticed last year, it's just a lot of me talking.
Share the wealth, right.
Emily's going to do it for us.
Thank you, Emily.
So as the Board knows, the January 31st is the deadline by which the Town Manager's Annual Budget Proposal is forwarded to the Finance Committee, and we asked the Board to endorse that proposal. And here, to set the stage for how we think about the budget, the departments, including the school department, submit their needs. They, those needs are level service, offering the budget to run the department as if it could have been run last year, and also what we call performance improvement. We use the term DSR4, which is Department Spending Request 4, for improvements to services or additional services. So you may hear that shorthand. When we're looking at these budget requests, we're bearing in mind the priorities that the Board has set in your goal setting, and that includes healthy and socially thriving, economically vital, livable, accessible and connected, safe, responsibly governed, and environmentally sustainable. These are the basis by which we think about all of these requests. And you'll hear when we talk about those that we've recommended and those that we've deferred, how we've thought through how those requests fit into these budget priorities. Budget over.
That's you.
Thank you. The current slide that you're seeing, that's just to recap in terms of revenues compared to expenses.
Do we have these slides? We don't, right?
No.
Okay, this is really challenging for us, just so we know. So when we do this next year.
If you, if you open the Town Manager's Budget Message, that chart is there.
Yeah. Table one?
Yep.
So this recaps the revenues to meet appropriations for fiscal 2025, their revenue estimates, and the expenditure recommendations by summary, going through the primary revenue sources. Property taxes, number one, which is estimated to increase by 4.3%, but there's two components to that. The property tax with new growth is estimated to increase by 5.1%, and that's revenue to the town. That's not necessarily what an individual tax bill is going to increase by. So new growth. However, we also have debt that's paid by debt exclusion, and each year that is declining because all projects that have been approved by funding through debt exclusion have been bonded or enclosed out. So that's going to continue to decline until such a time that a new project is approved. That's declining by $860,000 or an 8.1% decline, which nets out to the 4.3% increase in revenue. State aid is estimated to grow by 3.8%. The Governor unveiled some of her recommendations in her budget plan that was sent to the legislature or will be sent to the legislature tomorrow. We are looking at a 4% increase statewide per, for Chapter 70 or education aid. Our assumption is 4%. And unrestricted governmental aid, the Governor announced, would be increasing by 3%. Our estimate was 2.5%. Other aid categories, we had assumed level funding. As noted in the write-up that was in your packets, is all these are early estimates. They're subject to change. The Governor's budget will be first taken up by the House Ways and Means. They will come out with a budget recommendation. Then it'll be voted by the full floor of the House. Then it'll go to the Senate, Senate Ways and Means, they'll come up with their budget, and the full Senate. And then there's a fifth stop, that if the two budgets do not agree, they've never agreed, meaning the House and the Senate is a conference committee, then I announce a uniform budget recommendation, which is then put before the full floor, both the Senate and, both the House and the Senate, then sent on to the Governor. Each one of these steps can impact what state aid will be. And therefore, we don't adjust our revenue assumptions with state aid until the fall, unless there's something very extreme that happens, either a lot of revenue, which we're not anticipating because the state's assuming a 2% revenue growth, or a substantial cut over, over what we were estimating. With that, local receipts, we're looking at 2% increase in local receipts, similar to property tax. You got to look at it in two parts. The total estimate in local receipts, local receipts, those are the fees that you pay for plans, those licenses that businesses pay to the town, that motor vehicle excise tax, that's the room tax, that's the meals excise payment. All those are considered local receipts. We're looking at 2% increase over the current year budget estimate. However, the current year budget estimate had some one-time revenues who came from Children's Hospital for once and from Eversource for road work. So when you back that out, comparing apples to apples, so to speak, the revenue estimate's actually at 5.3% over the current year. The free cash, it has not been certified yet. We still don't have what that number will be. My best estimate at this time is $15 million, which compares to $14.5 million that was appropriated for the FY 24, which is an increase of 3.3%. The other thing is other funds. You see, that's a significant increase, a 47.7% increase. Those are non-recurring revenue sources. So generally, you're using these for non-recurring types of expenses. In the capital plan, which the Town Manager will touch upon later in the presentation, includes a recommendation for the high school tennis courts. In order to fund that, is to transfer $1 million from the athletic stabilization fund to help cover the cost for that project. So that's $1 million of the $4 million. $2.4 million is surplus overlay. These are reserves that set aside to meet for abatements and exemptions for property taxes. That was the amount that, from prior years, which has been determined by the Board of Assessors, were no longer needed, and that was released. They actually released $3 million, but if you recall, in the October special town meeting, $600,000 was used to appropriate to meet appropriations in October. Hence, there's $2.4 million, and that's being used in this budget plan. And the last item is reimbursements. These are revenue sources that come from other, from other funds, the reimburses to general funds, specifically sewer and water make a reimbursement to the general fund because there are expenses associated with those two enterprise funds, which are budgeted in the general fund, but should rightfully be paid by the water and sewer funds. And that would be employee benefits for the sewer and water employees. That would be general insurance for the water and sewer assets. That would be motor vehicle insurance for the vehicles owned and operated by the Water and Sewer Department, various assessments and such. So that's a reimbursement. Another reimbursement is for CPA. CPA is one of the types of debt. We have three projects that are being funded by CPA debt. One of them, we're sitting in the room right now, Town Hall, contributed a sizable amount to the cost of this project financed by CPA debt. The Rosemary Complex was funded in part by CPA, and the construction project now underway is the Emery Gopher renovation and expansion. As a result of that, that is increasing to $1,388,000 over the current year FY 24, which is $1,078,000. So those are the reimbursements. The Town Manager will, of course, get into the details on the uses, but one of the, some of the primary drivers of the cost to the department budgets, not townwide expenses, is that contracted services have been increasing since COVID. There have been many things that have driven up the cost for our private contractors, which are now being passed on businesses. And I think everybody's seen it, even with the businesses that they deal with in their own life. They were trying to hold the line. They haven't been able to hold the line because there's some cost that are permanently higher, and as a result, those costs are going up much more. And that was one of the major drivers in terms of the increases seen across municipal departments and even the school department. The next slide is just showing, again, the statement of where the primary funding sources are, or what makes up the funding sources for the general fund. To no surprise, and true in most suburban communities, property taxes account for most of it. For the budget plan going forward, it's 79.6% of the general fund expenses is supported by property taxes, which compares to 79.8%. So it's a slight decline. And then you'll see the actual in FY 23 is 75.8%. What's helpful to know is because everything's an estimate this time, and we actually firm up everything in the fall at the Fall Town Meeting. So you So you look at that FY 2023 actual, that 75.8% of the total came from property taxes, but the estimate at this time, two years ago for FY '23, it was 79.5. So the actual portion of property tax contributed to it declined. And usually, what accounts for that is state aid may be coming higher, and local receipts may come in higher. Note here is if you look at other available funds and free cash, the combination of those two, which we view more as non-recurring, there's a portion of free cash that we do consider recurring, but generally, we like to think about it as being non-recurring. 8.9% of this budget plan is relying upon those types of revenues, which compares to 7.5% for the current fiscal year of FY '24. And FY '23, it was only 6.5%. And you'll have a better understanding of why I'm just referencing this later on in the presentation. The next slide is just showing the history of cherry sheet revenue. This is primarily most of the money that we receive from the Commonwealth in what the changes have been from year to year. As you can see, '21 was a 4.5% increase, and let's jump all the way to FY '25 estimate, which is 3.8%. As I mentioned before, our estimate assumes a 4% increase in Chapter 70 or education aid, and we are assuming a 2.5% increase in unrestricted aid, and assuming level dollar for, for all the other state programs. And with that, next slide, please. Free cash, this is a history of how free cash has been used in the last three fiscal years. Those numbers and how we allocate it. One important thing is in the operating budget, the guidance that we use, that no more than 2% of the prior fiscal year's closeout would be used for funding the operating budget or the actual turnback, whichever is lower. So if you focus on the last slide, which, which is showing the certification year, which was 2023, which is the funding source for the FY '24 budget, the budget year that we're in, the 2% of the prior operating budget would have been $3,874,000. We, the community ended up appropriating just under $3.6 million to the actual operating budget. So we kept within our policy of not doing more than 2%. This budget plan that we're looking at FY '24, that operating maximum would be $4,084,000. The plan that's before you is $4,081,000. The, the reason I point that out is the town manager's budget does have $233,137 of free cash unallocated. So basically, we're showing a surplus in revenue. We would not want to use that to appropriate to the operating budget because the operating budget's recurring, and we already know that we don't want to appropriate over the portion of free cash that we estimate to be recurring, because you're setting yourself up to, for greater difficulty in the following fiscal year. And with that, I'll turn it back to the town manager.
Thank you. So what we focus on in the budget message is some of the budget drivers that we look at every year, and it has been a very useful exercise to look at the same three budget drivers because we can have data over almost 20 years now of where those items are. So employee benefits for, for many of those years have been a significant driver, significant increases and crowding out some discretionary things that we want to do. In the last several years, these have been relatively stable. We, the employee benefits line is increased as a performance budget to support the increase in headcount that we'll be talking about, that we're recommending. We are looking at 10% increase in health insurance rates in, that we're assuming are going to happen in FY '25, but the budget is not up that much because we've had stable enrollment and people are choosing some of our lower-cost plans, including our qualified high deductible plan, and one, some migration from when we had a group of folks from Fallon, they, they and others have moved to, for instance, a Blue Cross plan that's cheaper. So some of that movement is helping to keep this line stable. Over the last, the, one of the things we, we think of when we think about health insurance, we have 854 subscribers out of about 1,265 or so eligible people who can take it, which is only about 2/3. But when there's a downturn, people come back to us. So we have people who, generally speaking, may be able to get insurance from a spouse, and if that spouse's employment becomes tenuous or they lose their job, they come back on us. So we've seen, you know, the health insurance enrollment go back and forth. The number of enrollees was up in the 10 years, which is up 4.5%, but over the last five years and one year, it's been almost exactly flat. So that's where we are with employee benefits, fairly stable at this point. School enrollment is another big driver for us. And what's interesting now is that school enrollment isn't going up as fast as it used to be, but school needs are going up if we, you know, what we read and hear from, from the school committee and the superintendent. For the 2020 to 2021 school year, we had an actual significant decline in enrollment of 3.9%, which was 223 students. That was one of the biggest declines we'd seen since a very long time. It's been climbing since, but in the range of .6, .2, and .4. So we are not back to where we were in the 2019, 2020 school year. But as we meet with the superintendent and talk to the senior leadership team, the students we have have a lot of needs and have been through a lot, a lot. And this pandemic will be carried on our backs for a long time, and that's particularly true with students, frankly, at all ages. So the last piece is staffing. We, there are 9.1 positions recommended by the superintendent. We'll talk a little bit more about it, but we're generally recommending the superintendent's, we are recommending the superintendent's final recommendation to the school committee, that which includes 9.1 FTEs, and then 7.3 FTEs on the municipal sector. I'll say, this is not a lot of performance improvement on the municipal sector. Three of the positions are full-time, ARPA-funded, mental health epidemiologists and public health physicians that we have half-year funding for in FY '25. So this represents half of them, and then we'll have to make it up, assuming that, you know, everybody agrees with our recommendation and town meeting does. So these are positions that we really don't want to lose, but they aren't adding now because we're doing those services. Another program that we'll talk about in our performance budget is that we're looking at in-sourcing cleaning of the Newman School. We outsourced cleaning at Pollard and the high school many years ago now, 10, 15 years?
I was on the school committee when it happened. It's a long time.
So it's more than 11. So, and then at one point, we decided that we would outsource the Newman School, and we've been doing a lot of thinking and evaluating about that. The elementary school model really does benefit from in-house custodians. And so when the, so we printed these phrases, you can make notes and read them. Sorry, we should have done that. So at the Newman School, we can perform the service that we're performing with the contract cleaners by hiring three custodians and canceling the contract. And as Katie will talk about, that's only a net increase of $28,000. So we think we're going to get better service. We are in a position now where we are able to hire custodians, we're fully staffed on custodians. That wasn't true when this outsourcing to the Newman. So that's a proposal that we're looking at. So essentially, we're getting what we hope is more reliable service, a good service and for the elementary school, but it's not a new program that we're offering. And then there are two things that we're hoping to add on. One is, we've been really trying, I think for four years, to provide an assistant superintendent in the fleet department. This is a huge, you've heard the size of our fleet. I mean, they've run out of numbers. And we are running it on four mechanics, four mechanics and a supervisor who has to supervise the mechanics in their work and also do all the ordering and all of that work. So we provided, in our recommendation, half-year funding so that we could start the position in half, and then it would move into FY '26 as a full-time position, as a way to get it in the door. That's the assistant fleet position. And then the other position is a quarter of a senior project manager. So we've proposed that 75% of the project manager be funded in the Pollard feasibility study. Now, if that doesn't get funded, this could move away too. It is, it is our preferred method to have the project manager in the operating budget and then charge the article. But there's a lot of thinking about that, and we thought this was a compromise because there's been other views on, by other boards and committees, that maybe that isn't the best way. I would suggest that this is one item that we'll probably have a lot of conversation leading up to town meeting, it's about how to do it. To us, it doesn't make sense to have it fully funded in the Pollard feasibility because there, we're very lean, we only have the director, one project manager, and an admin. And if the director had to go on family medical leave, this person couldn't fill in and go to a meeting because they're only on Pollard. So this 25% would allow them to go to meetings, come to the select board, you know, those kinds of things. So we think it's a compromise, but if there are other ideas, we're happy to hear them. So I'm sure we'll hear more about that and the next step of the project. So then, we're moving on to improvements.
Great. And this is page nine in the packet. So as the town manager mentioned, when departments are submitting their requests at the start of this process, they submit a maintenance budget. This is what would it cost in FY '25 to do what you're doing in '24? But then we also ask for this DSR4. So what are the performance improvements? This could be added capacity or expense money to do a new service or to improve an existing one. And so this slide represents those performance budget requests that the town manager has included in her recommended FY '25 budget. That first line, the employee benefits, OPEB and workers' comp, reflect the added benefit cost that the cost would incur, that the town would incur based on the added headcount. So the added staff that the town manager spoke to, that I will repeat here again. And looking down, the select board and opposite town manager, the $35,000 is to support new boarding committee software. So this would help with agenda packets and be not just for this board, but for all boards and committees town-wide, much more user-friendly, both for staff, the committees, but also for the end user, the public side, to be able to access the digital content.
And archiving, right?
Archiving and tagging to YouTube recordings by the minute and agenda item and all of these things that we would love to have. The $248,000 submission for the finance department actually supports public safety technology support. So they, of course, run a 24/7/365 operation, and this would provide contracted services to continue in FY '25 to support mostly police and fire, but of course, public works as well during weather events for IT needs 24/7/365. And I think the town manager will be talking more about other IT items further in the deck. The building design and construction performance improvement is that one quarter of the FTE that was just discussed as being in the operating budget, with the balance being in the Pollard capital article. The health and human services positions, again, are those four positions, actually. There's three full-time positions that were funded via ARPA, epidemiologist, public health nurse, and youth mental health clinicians. They're in the town manager's recommended budget to support half of a year because we have ARPA that will get them through the first half of FY '25. And then the aging services clinician, this dollar amount, the $34,000, is actually for a full year of funding, but it's a part-time position. And the ARPA funding right now will get them just to the end of fiscal '24. So I think we had a lot of lessons learned coming out of the pandemic, and one of the ones that we've talked quite a bit in this budget process about is to maintain that expanded capacity on public health and mental health to continue the needs that the community has, and to maintain that infrastructure, not just in a crisis. And then lastly, the performance budget improvements in DPW. Again, that half-year funding for the assistant fleet supervisor, this is a position the department's been asking for, for a number of years, and I think we're all glad to finally be able to start to get it going to support their efforts. The in-sourcing of the, of the Newman custodians has already been mentioned. In total, for the added FTEs and the benefits, it's about $350,000. But as the town manager mentions, once you net out the contract amount that DPW already had in their budget, the total increase for this fiscal year is just over $28,000. And lastly, for DPW, there's $10,000 that they've requested to do a full shade tree inventory. So this is all public town-owned shade trees so that we can incorporate that full inventory into our asset management system and help Park Forest Forestry Division better kind of understand where the trees are, what their current health is, and manage them over time.
Is the asset management system tied into GIS? Like, does it become a layer in GIS where you could see all the shade trees or something?
It's a wonderful, yes.
It could.
Yes.
It's the intent.
Thank you. Any questions on those DSR4s that are recommended to be funded? Great. So on the next slide, we also wanted to run through all of those that were requested but are not included in the town manager's recommended budget. And I'd say, you know, as a general theme, it's not for lack of need or lack of merit, it's just the reality of having more requests than resources available in any given year. And so the changes to the submitted budget, so these are all reductions from what the department's requested. Townwide expenses, that $750,000 is largely made up of reducing the reserve fund that was submitted by $500,000 back to the level funding of FY '24 level. And the bulk of the other reductions in townwide expenses are for benefit costs for employees that were requested but will not be funded in this recommended budget, and so those costs won't be incurred. Legal services has been reduced by just under $11,000 to level funded to last year, and I think the sense was that we can manage through with that level heading into FY '25.
Doing what we know today.
Asterisk on all things. Thank you, Adam. And the finance department, that $16,500 is a deferred multi-purpose printer for the town manager's office for planning and community development. Planning had submitted two requests. One was for an additional full-time planner. I anticipate we will see this request come again, but this is deferring funding that request at this time. And also, there was a request for some additional administrative hours that are being deferred to support that team. The reduction in the Minuteman budget reflects an update that the town received from the acting superintendent that went to the Minuteman School Committee. So it's more just an adjustment to align with where they're at in their budget process. And I'd say the same is true for the $176,000 from the need in public schools. The superintendent updated his budget recommendation to the school committee that included that reduction, and I think they're voting on it tonight. The building department submission, this is the 75% of the requested senior project manager. It's shown as a reduction here because we're not including it in the town manager's FY ' '25 operating budget. It is in the capital article for the Pollard. The $388,000 that was requested by the Department of Public Works that is currently not recommended is really a deferral of some additional staffing requests, so a park ranger, a heavy motor vehicle equipment operator, and highway division. That other half of the year for the assistant fleet supervisor. And then for non-staff requests, there was a deferral of a lift for the building maintenance division and additional resources for a proposed forestry management program. So DPW had submitted $178,000 that would support both an increase in tree plantings by DPW and also an increase in contracted services to help us remove trees that we know need to come down. That $178,000 was deferred for future year consideration, but the $10,000 for the inventory was included. The health and human service requests that have been deferred are additional administrative hours at the Center at the Heights and additional hours in the environmental health inspector team. Team. The public library amount was a requested part-time reference librarian that would have focused on the young adults. This is, again, deferred for future year consideration. And lastly, the Needham Council of Arts and Culture had requested a $10,000 increase over FY24. That has been deferred, but as the town manager mentioned in an earlier item, they have some residual ARPA money that it remains available to them for the rest of this calendar year. So with that, we'll turn it.
I'm being refunded through the arts. Just recapping on the school budget, we talked about enrollment, we talked about FTEs. Katie talked about the change in the Minuteman. The Minuteman School Committee hasn't met to hasn't voted yet either, so that number could change. And there are circumstances when the state aid number can change that number. So we have, in the past, had to adjust Minuteman, you know, all the way up to town meeting. And I would note that under the town bylaw, if the school committee votes a different number than we've recommended, then we include it as an addendum, and that's what happens at their meeting at the same time.
Kate, I'm just curious, if we were to go back and look at enrollment that's been added for schools since the pandemic, right? So we dropped, but we've added enrollment, I know, in each of the years. I'm just curious about what that total is.
The school enrollment?
Staffing that's been added. So I guess I'm not meaning enrollment, I'm meaning staffing. I know the enrollment is actually still not up to where we were pre-pandemic, but we have added staffing. So to some extent, it's almost starting to be a misnomer that we're adding because of enrollment needs. It's really because of student services needs more than anything else.
It's 58.8 since the FY2020, which would be school year ending 20?
It would have been June 30th, yes.
So how many?
58.8.
58.8. Yep, I have that present somewhere. Okay, thank you. I've been trying to think if we could think about how many heads were added to the town, you know, based on sort of enrollment increases, if we looked at our enrollment from 10 years ago to now, right, which is up 4,000, then we've added, you know, how many heads? I don't know, just.
That's 58.8 with just the schools, just to be clear.
Yes.
The town is 18.8.
Over that period.
Over that same period.
So, Madam Chair and members of the board, another area in terms of appropriations, there are some particular highlights. There's unpaid bill prior year. We had one in October, if you recall. In order to pay a bill that relates to a prior fiscal year, you need the town meeting vote, which is a four-fifths vote at an annual and a nine-tenths vote at a special town meeting. I sort of, when I see this, I would love the ability to be able to tell a utility or something that sends a family a bill and say, well, we have to wait until our annual family meeting to decide if we're going to pay you or not. But under state law, that's what we have to do, and that's what the $16,845 is for.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This seems like one it would be worth, like, flagging to Kim Driscoll and saying, let me work on getting to somebody to get that fixed. And maybe to Denise, we should put on Denise list, like lobby all of our people, because that's just crazy. So, yeah.
What was it for? It is actually a software license from 2021, which the company COVID, a recurring theme you keep hearing, is that's what happened in the fall, too, for fees associated with printers at the Rosemary Complex and at the Center at the Heights. They didn't bill timely, and finally, someone caught up that's realized they hadn't billed for three years. It happened that they got the bill to us just in time when we were closing out FY23. So we were able to pay that one, and of course, '24, we were able to pay, but this one, we cannot pay, that's a town meeting vote. The next item is actually a contribution to one of our stabilization funds. This is the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund, which the contribution going into it is representative of fees collected by Park and Recreation during FY23 that are a percentage of the fees that they collect, generally associated with field use, but for other use, that they reserve that so it can be appropriated into the Athletic Stabilization Fund, because that helps, that's, that helps provide some of the funding for when we have to do the turf replacements, for instance. And that was the reason, primary reason that fund was established, but we've also been able to successfully use it to do other recreational program improvements. And as I noted earlier, $1 million is recommended to come from this fund to contribute towards the cost of the tennis courts. Drain sewer contribution. If you recall, during the revenues, when I was discussing revenues and the funding sources for the general fund, there are reimbursements that come to the general fund. Well, this is effectively the general fund reimbursing the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the drains program. And the reason is we appropriate the monies for that program in the Sewer Enterprise Fund because effectively, those are the employees that do the work. And from an accounting standpoint, from the day-to-day weekly stuff, it is logistically and administratively easier just to have all the expenses appropriated into one place. However, it is considered a general fund expense, and the best way that I've been, the best way I find to describe it is if the town in Needham were to get out of the water and sewer business, we sold it to Acme Water and Sewer Corporation, and it's a private entity. Drains program is still the town's responsibility. You're associating with the roadways, you're associating with water runoff, storm runoff, you're associating with the cleanup, the catch basins and everything. So it remains a town responsibility. And just as a reminder, Athletic Facilities Improvement Fund, we also created a Stormwater Stabilization Fund, which there is a fee, which in fact, the board a few meetings ago, at our recommendation, voted to defer the implementation till April 1st because of the transition in the water and sewer billing change from software applications. Those payments that will go directly into that fund is for capital improvements associated with stormwater. And this is the NIPDs, this is pollution reduction. This is not dealing directly with flooding. This is not going to build new ways to contain and reduce flooding. This is to capture and clean up the water, the stormwater runoff, so there are less pollutants getting into the streams and into the ponds and into the river, Charles River, and into lakes in town. That is the purpose of that. And that's been an obligation that every community in the United States of America has, including town in Needham. Allowance for abatements and exemptions, this is basically the reserve that you have that you know how much is being taxed, and you know there's probably, there are individuals that qualify for exemptions. Reductions because of income, because of age, because of a handicap, or some other special condition are there, or there was a mistake made in the calculation of the bill, and they file an abatement, and they document that it was incorrectly assessed, and hence the taxes reduced. That's what the allowance of the abatements and exemptions are for. Our studying number here is $1.9 million. This is actually 26% lower than the current year. So if, so if we have increases in revenues, one of the primary focuses is to get this reserve close to where it is in FY24. One, because it just makes sense to have that reserve. Secondly, FY25 is the five-year total townwide revaluation required by the state. And as a result, when you do that, every community sees an increase in abatement applications because there's more attention paid by the public, because there's more attention paid by the press about that all properties were looked at. The Board of Assessors do capture the changes in values because of changes to property, because of improvements or tear downs and such. But this requires a complete review of all properties and personal property. All this data is then sent to the Department of Revenue, which also reviews process and approval. And in fact, it is because in FY25, that's our five-year revaluation year, is that we would need to have a town meeting if we're going to do any appropriations in the fall earlier rather than later, because this is a longer window that we require in order to get the tax rate set, because there's a longer approval process, as well as a longer time after the public notice is released to allow people to actually challenge the assessment before they're committed.
In case people just missed this, this is a hint that there's a challenge already in trying to figure out what the date is going to be of fall special town meeting.
Needs to be October.
There's foreshadowing that's going on, what Dave just said.
It will not be in November.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll turn it back to the town manager.
As we've talked about several times, we are, the school committee has taken up and will be taking up again today to recommend a warrant article to the board, the consolidation of technology services, such that the town will create a unified structure for overseeing our information technology, and it would be placed under the superintendent of schools. And we propose that the funding of our software and our staff would move along to the school department. So there's a little bit of a confusing portion here is that the warrant article is proposed for $934,055. That's because we're, we have this consolidated technology of $686,000 and the $248,000 that Dave mentioned, Katie mentioned previously, as the public safety improvements in the Finance Department. So that warrant article would be proposed to the board in the warrant, when you take up the warrant, at $248,000 of tax levy and $686,055 in free cash. And this will include items such as transitional personnel costs that might be needed, rollout of the new phone system that we're looking at, help desk services, policy planning device, policy and planning services, device expansion. The outside consultant plant marine study and the acting head of the Consolidated Technology Services has determined that the townside device replacement schedule is not, there are not enough, not enough is being done annually, so that would increase that. And then significant investment in network monitoring and cybersecurity. The consultant did recommend the potential of having a staff person to support cybersecurity, and the current thinking of the team that's working on this is that that would be outsourced, at least in the beginning, because it really is a 24/7 need that we have to monitor all of our systems. So that is what's included in the operating budget, and the board would have a chance to vote on that recommendation as part of the warrant over the next few weeks. We'll close the warrant on the 13th, and then start taking positions. We have our annual facilities maintenance program, which we have funded at least the last three years at a million dollars, which Cecilia is busy spending, or was, until her move uptown. Final on wire removal, I was thinking about this. This is something that applies to what Karis talked about, that the two big utilities, public regulated utilities in Massachusetts are Verizon and Eversource, as you know. They share communities for poles. So Needham is a Verizon community, the town next door might be an Eversource community. So they own the poles. So it's Verizon's job in Needham to make sure that all the wires are moved off the pole and then move it. This is something that has been a great source of frustration for people, both aesthetically, sometimes they're worried about safety, but also a lot of road projects. I can remember there was one in the Markley Road parking lot, must have been three years, and couldn't finish the lot. But one of the items on the poles is us, which is these fire alarm, fire alarm cables. Because we have, digitized, it's wireless now, the system that we have, these wires can come down. So this is a project that, using a couple of different funding sources, will go through and just remove all the copper wire, and we will be out of the business of being contacted by Verizon and Eversource to move on. Planning consulting assistance, this is something that we funded not that long ago and had a need to use immediately in the current projects that we're, we're going to use it up entirely, I think, from the, with the homework, along with grant funding that we got. So we're asking that, that that be replenished, because it really, it's just so helpful when something comes up mid-year, that that can be there. Property tax assistance program, continuing the program as it has been, I think, since 2008. Scientific experts and consultants, again, this was the money that was available to the Health Department and the Board of Health when something came up, and this was, the last one was fully expended on the Claxton Field project. So we're there seeking to replenish that. The Small Repair Grant Program, again, has just been so successful, and we'd ask that be continued. And that Fleet Refurbishment Program, which has the effect of not replacing but extending the useful life of our fleet, this is the water fleet, so this would be funded by the water retained earnings. So we funded from the general fund, year before last, I think.
Sewer and general.
Sewer and general. So with respect to capital, there are three categories, a capital recommending tier-two capital, funding capital that we would like to move into the capital budget, and then something that we would like to move from debt to cash. So with, you know, in reverse order, if our free cash comes in higher than we're expecting it to, we will be asking you to consider switching the fire engine from debt to cash. This is something we, our inclination is when we can to have rolling stock funded by cash. Now, we were able to do that with the ladder truck because of the free cash that we got. These are very expensive pieces of equipment, so it's certainly appropriate to fund them through debt, and we didn't want to make, you know, all the difficult choices that we would have to make with the rest of the capital by funding its 1.25.
1.25.
For the engine, but if we have additional free cash, we would like to have that conversation.
You probably told this earlier, but remind me, when do we know what the free cash number will really be?
When the Department of Revenue certifies it, which.
So maybe you didn't tell us beforehand, but is there a general sense of when that might be?
We're hoping we should know it by the end of March.
Okay, thank you.
And moving from debt to cash is one of the items that's allowed by town meeting because it's less of a burden on the community. We don't have any in, right now, previously, well, I guess that's not true. There are a few items from tier-two capital that we are recommending. There are some that we would like to consider if, again, if the free cash, we did fund the road program entirely, almost entirely, except for stormwater through Chapter 90, and we could have a conversation, but if the free cash is in the $15 million vicinity, we'll use the free cash this year. The Chapter 90 this year is because we were able to fund the Pollard. So there are a few items that we are recommending move from tier-two. The next one, Emily. The first is that the number that we're carrying for Pollard feasibility can be reduced by 1.2 million. This is very positive news, and that includes funding of the 75% of the project manager for a few years during that feasibility. And as such, that's how we were able to fund the Auditorium Theatrical Light and Sound Design. And then that could be, could be opportunity for bonding the approximate $2 million balance next year after the design is completed. And then we are recommending moving items from tier-two into the capital budget, which includes pickup truck escape, two Ford F-50s, the cargo van, an F-150, a John Deere loader, and then the new one, which is utility van. Those were all included in the tier-two cash capital, in the capital plan that we brought the board approved in December. So if the board is in agreement, those would include, they'd be included in the cash capital item on the warrant. Dave has one more. Are you going to talk about that?
Yes. The CPA fund estimates for receipts, that's the 2% surcharge on property tax bills, $3,387,000. State match estimate is $578,000. Something very important, this year, fiscal 2024, we kept, prior to fiscal 2024, we were seeing. seeing the state match coming in higher than our original estimates, which then we, to comply with a lot, at least 10% of the receipts are either appropriated for one of, for the three required purposes, community housing, open space, and historic preservation, or reserved for a future appropriation. And because we were benefiting from those higher state match amounts, we had to go to town meeting and basically supplement the amount, the amounts appropriate to those three specific reserves. FY '24, the state match came in under our estimate, first time that that's happened.
Been expecting that that was coming, to be fair.
Yes, we have, yes. We have been anticipating that, and every year we kept it down, but everybody was just overly eager and tired of having us to have to reappropriate, so went back to my conservative roots and doing $578,000.
There it is.
The, we also show you the balances in those required reserves. And then the general reserve is monies that, that were estimated to come in in the fiscal year that, that weren't required to be reserved and, but didn't have a specific project. So those monies are put in what's called the general reserve. And then a subsequent town meeting can appropriate money out of the general reserve for any of the four allowed purposes, the three required, open space, community housing, historic preservation, and the fourth, which is optional, is recreational purposes. And whatever is in that fund on June 30th closes out, and it will get recertified as CPA free cash, just like the general fund free cash, we don't know what the CPA free cash is. The CPC has three projects that they're looking at for consideration. And the only thing I would note is the Needham Housing Authority request came in at 5.5 million dollars. You can see between the community housing reserve, the general reserve, and the last several years, CPC has been setting aside 22% of the estimated receipts each year into the, into the community housing bucket, that, which is going to be about approximately $170,000, $870,000 for FY '25, that should the project be deemed eligible to be funded, and should CPC believe that it should be funded at requested amount, that they would be able to do that.
Finally, over the many years we've been doing this, this slide used to be the Patriots. It was like, oh, Pat, so we decided that these were our Patriots.
Yes.
This is the girls swim and dive and the boys volleyball, and they're our champions.
Yeah, absolutely. Not the Pats.
It was that or Taylor Swift.
I was going to say Jason Kelsey at this point.
We went home top. Any other questions aboard my house?
Kathy.
I, I very much enjoyed reading this. And at the beginning, your title, Uncertainty Ahead, Uncertainty Is the Refuge of Hope. So just globally, what are the big drivers of this uncertainty?
I think that the big drivers of the uncertainty are significant infusions of funding available for states and localities from the federal government in the huge infrastructure chips, inflation reduction, and ARPA. And so those have just really allowed those entities to do a lot of things that, once it dries up, it's going to be sort of a screeching halt. We are concerned that, you know, the state has used those monies and has been able to give us money, and so that's, that's, that's one thing. I think the, the results of a presidential election, this is a very strange time, and it's just really unknowable what might happen. I think that's an area of great uncertainty for us. Would you add anything to that?
Well, certainly concerns with the economy still exist, as you saw the state announce that the revenue estimate, which was higher, they had to scale it back, because they're seeing signs that tax collections are not coming in, as well as we're seeing a slowdown in construction activity here in Needham. So those were examples of where we're a little more cautious in terms of budgeting priorities and, and the rate of growth in spending.
Just the last piece of the puzzle, which is that the costs of things are still high. And so even when we were looking at the maintenance budget submissions from departments, the cost of do the same thing next year is growing, I think, at a faster rate than our standard 4% growth anticipated rate on the revenue side. So those things need to shake out.
So I, I do think too, right, we've had this long period where we've been able to say 4% growth, and we've been able to make all of it work, but if inflation is higher, I understand it's come back down, right? But if inflation is higher, cost of borrowing is higher, all those different things, that eventually catches up, and it will be challenged.
Inflation on some of the things that we buy is not coming down as fast as it, as other things.
Right.
I wonder if you could go back to the overall general fund budget summary that I think was like the very first slide. At the bottom of this chart, the dollar amount and percentage change gets very low or high. And I'm just wondering, I think we saw some of these things in your explanation, but I'm just wondering if you can kind of call out, these are things that were moved from the general fund budget to capital?
Do you mean the negative amounts?
Yeah, can you just explain those in greater detail? Or at least call them out so that I recognize them from what you've just gone through?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I can do the overbeat.
The financial warrant articles are the other appropriations that have standalone warrant articles, which are not capital or the operating budget. So for instance, the items that the town manager was discussing, like the property tax assistance program, the facility maintenance article, those are not capital, but they are standalone appropriations. That's what the financial warrant article group is. Many of them are one-time, some of them, such as the property tax assistance program and the, and the facility maintenance article, those are recurring articles, but the amounts may change from year to year. They haven't had to change in the last few years, but they can, there's greater flexibility in terms of how much is appropriated to those in any given year.
So simply fewer of them this year, is that?
Yes, yes, correct.
We have fewer financial warrant articles, or they're lower dollar?
Combination.
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 Okay.
Other appropriations are items that are, have to be appropriated, that are not a financial warrant article, or, or not a capital item, and not a operating budget. The clearest example of that would be the transfer of general fund monies to the sewer enterprise fund. The other thing would be the appropriation to the stabilization fund, the athletic facilities stabilization fund, those are two examples. Other items that would, that have appeared in this line in prior years and did in FY ' '24 is also the capital improvement fund, the capital facility fund. And we had greater appropriations to those, generally from one-time monies. So, and the reduction in the drains is because the cost of that particular item for FY '25 in the sewer budget is less than it is in FY '24. FY '24 is about $800,000, FY '25 is about $35,000 less. Other amounts to be raised, these are the items that the board has no control over, town meeting has no control over. These are amounts that are raised, state assessments, county assessments, and then the overlay provision, these amounts that have to be raised on the tax levy. And, and as you see, that's going down, and the primary amount to that is the overlay that I was discussing, that we've, that we're assuming right now an allowance that's 26% less than it is this year. And that's the primary driver, both state, state assessments, which the largest is the MBTA assessment, and the county assessment will be going up in cost.
Thank you for doing this, it's a lot of work. Remarkable.
And this is just the beginning, so now we'll, we'll wiggle, wiggle, wiggle all different items back and forth, and have a discussion with the finance committee, and ultimately have something to bring to town meeting.
Thank you, project manager, especially Mitchell and Paula.
So if you're so inclined, we would appreciate a motion to, I think it's indoors.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Yeah, ma'am chair, I, I move that the board vote to recommend approval of the town manager's proposed annual budget for fiscal year 2025.
Second. Any further discussions? You'll have more opportunities to ask more. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm zero.
Need a deadline.
At the end of this town manager list, it says town manager report, so are there various other sundry items?
That's one thing, I wanted to note that the front page of the New York Times this week included a story about the Boston Post cane, which in fact, the communities near us have had to find on eBay and buy back. But our Boston Post cane is right there, framed by me 30 years ago. It has been questioned as whether it's secure enough, so we're looking at Apple tagging it at some point. It is a wonder, it was a very interesting, it's a great story about how it was really marketing for the Boston Post, and how as people lived longer, it was harder and harder to keep them, and how they got lost. But ours is right here, so very exciting. People come in and see it, but they don't know what it is.
Very cool.
It was a great article.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda, and we're, you know, within shouting distance of being on time, sort of, is a board discussion with a goal update. So as all of you know, our schedules and lives were complicated, and we decided not to take another half a day out of our list to try to go through this. So we have talked about a number of these in various ways recently. We thought maybe we could just work through an update and look at where we are on our goals this evening.
Did you want me to just sort of quickly?
Do you want to?
Sure.
Lead us through, that would be great.
I'll hit the highlights if that's okay.
Yes, I think that's perfect.
HRC is working on a, a program to institutionalize community conversations on RAY, so there's a new program that they're working on. Our office has distributed a survey, and we're working on gathering statistics on our candidate pool and our existing board members, so that's ongoing. We received a grant for a locally internally focused equity audit that we have two years to work on, but we're working to create the scope of services for that. And that's really to look at the department's practices and policies and, through an equity lens. Staff are working on the curriculum for a board and committee orientation that we're hoping to roll out for electeds in the spring and then appointed members in the fall. Let's see, Indigenous Peoples' Day has been completed, we're working on Valor Act, we're working on, the focus groups with BIPOC community members were held in the fall, and we'll be working on implementing what we gather from that. You know, number 12, the home block, looks just like all the other blocks, but it could be the size of the entire document. So lots going on there, which I assume will be come up under committee reports, so I won't go on that. School master plan, I mean, just the very exciting news about the Pollard, the feasibility we were able to fund, and then we were able to lower it, which was great, and we were able to put some of that funding into the auditorium. And project manager, Public Works is undertaking their service delivery at the RTS. Steven Palmer is a, is, we're working on, but we haven't quite brought back, we're working on trying to find a, a way to survey what might go there, so more to follow on that. We have tasked the engineering department to look at several locations for off-leash dog that were recommended by the active recreation area.
I couldn't come up with the first word.
Working group. And they've given me a deadline of August, so that's where that one, that's moving along, all the things that the director of public works brought out today, that's in there too. The housing authority redevelopment, as we know, is proceeding along the zoning and the CPC and the T-CHOC track. The local historic district, the final report's done, that was exciting, we had the hearing, it will be on the warrant. The branding and town seal committee is going strong, as we noted earlier, we have hired a consultant who will be there at the meeting tomorrow. In terms of expanded active and passive recreation facilities, finding a way to fund the tennis courts was very important for us, as well as, I noted here, but the Claxton project. And the active recreation feasibility study has been procured and awarded to CHA, and is looking at, the first project would be locations for the skate park and the pickleball, which the ARA working group had recommended. The barn at Ridge Hill, we did extend the license for the Needham Community Theater so that they could use the downstairs. We, the town had done, in concert with the community theater, some improvements to that lower barn space, so they're able to use it, and it will be included in the capital plan moving forward. And the Trailhead project is moving forward. The, we will be having the app-based parking solution, we expect by the end of the year, I think is where we are, which is very exciting. Let's see where we are. A quiet zone, met last night, the team is working its way forward. Maryam, were you going to do, ma'am chair, were you going to do a committee update on the working group?
Was.
At your next, with respect to downtown redesign phase two, which is pretty much a great Plaine Avenue project at this point, we had tasked three firms to do a reimagine, and they will all be here on February 13th at your meeting. We've heard from Karis on snow removal, the Central Ave Center Street Bridge, the funding is in the tip and is overseen by the town of Dover. Police chief will be here on February 27th to update his annual report. Flag policy we finished, bylaw charter review, the board appointed the working group, which will meet February 7th to think about what might be brought forward to town meeting. We've included phase one of the DPW phased renovation in the capital plan. We've included, let's see, the CATH upgrades were included in the capital plan in future years, and the library, the young adult project is the one that was funded in the FY '25 capital plan. And the, we recodified the non-criminal disposition bylaw. Sadly, there are tweaks required. We didn't include the plastic bag bylaw fines in it, and then there's another, is it, what's the other one that we, another one that's coming, is it?
There's two more that.
Two more that would be needed to add to that. And we adopted the net zero building code. We have the tree summit the same night as the branding committee, we're trying to bunch our meetings together on February 7th. And I think that's a, oh, and the climate action plan, we will be bringing you a proposal for a follow-on committee for climate action oversight. And at some point, the board will take a vote to support the climate action plan, trying to make sure I know what that, when that is, and we'll wait for CP, CA PC to tell us that. So that was very fast, but I think you'll see we're making great progress. Staff are. Staff are working really hard and all goals are not equal.
All goals are not equal. So there's not, yeah, we don't have a way of designating the weight of a goal.
We'll figure that out.
Here. I do know we had a message from a resident today related to the, you know, the rail trail extension. And I do want to make it clear that although it shows in here as deferred, right, it's not that this board considers that unimportant. It's a question of what can be achieved, the cost to achieve it, and where our focus needs to be right now. And so while it would be lovely to be able to put that extension in place, that extension is actually quite a costly extension that puts people on a road. We haven't figured out what to do with them when they're on the road at that point. There's not good solutions for test on streets. So it's of a piece and there's more work to be done and things to come together. Similarly, I think what we learned as we were looking, for example, at the feasibility of a shared use way between Needham Heights and the city of Newton, we now understand the relative costs for different alternatives there. We also understand that Newton's focus from their side really is on getting their accessible MBTA stations. They do not have bandwidth to be focused on this at all with us right now, is what they've told us. So all of these things will not go away. Part of what happens in municipal governance is good ideas stay on the table for a very long time because we are not going away. All right? And so we'll keep every year taking a look at what it makes sense and what can we move forward and what kind of projects are achievable. So it's not that we are dismissing these things, it's that we're, we are being pragmatic with what we can actually accomplish with our time, talent, and resources.
Yeah, if I could add, I also was contacted by quite a few residents, actually, about this specific, these specific items, the bike trails. And forwarded several suggestions for funding sources that were sent to me, to our mobility committee, and would hope that, you know, potentially those could provide some funding sources for at least moving the ball forward, if not completing the play. But I think that when we talked about deferring some of these very expensive projects, one of the things that we talked about was that they don't connect to each other by and large and that that's a problem and it sort of limits the usability of each portion. But I did think that we talked about potentially trying to find a street route that would serve the same purpose in the short term while we tried to put together a rail trail. And I'm wondering if that's still on the table. I think it's really important to provide some kind of at least bike lanes that go along with our utility corridor.
We did forward that request to the mobility committee after your goal setting, so.
I wonder if we could maybe get an update from them at some point to find out how that project is going. I'd like not to let this one lie. We've got a lot of projects on the table, especially the MBTA communities, where we're proposing housing that would have reduced parking limits potentially, increased commuter housing, and providing bike routes so that people can not have a car is a really important element to that whole scheme. And I just worry that if we don't plan for it, it won't happen and.
We can follow up with mobility and I, it really is a resource issue and engineering issue. So, but yeah.
Well, and I'm sure we forwarded mobility a number of ideas. So I'm sure even within the universe of ideas we forwarded them, they were going to need to make some priorities. But all the reason to understand what priorities they did determine.
Right.
Just thinking of this one other deferred. I'm looking at the Affordable Housing Trust. I believe the Legal Women Voters is about to come to a conclusion or sometime in the near future with their research project on Affordable Housing Trust. So again, we are looking forward to receiving the input from that report and understanding how it might inform our potential thoughts and direction there. Other comments from people? Anything else? A lot done, a lot still in process.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot going on.
Now I'm looking at number eight, the 19th observance. I know a lot of communities did something last year. I wonder if we could even just did a small observation of the event. Doesn't have to be a part, you know, I'm not sure how big we want this. It can't, it seems to be very small, but if it was something as simple as a reading of the Emancipation Proclamation, something very limited, but at least to sort of note it and honor it that way. And then hopefully from there, maybe people can figure out how to grow it.
So I think the challenge, right, was finding a group that was willing to take this on.
Right.
Yeah. But I think that's not a bad idea in a very small kind of setting to kind of set the tone and, you know, that'll, that'll happen over time. Looking forward to that, but I think, Kevin, I like the idea of that.
Thank you. All right.
All right. We will get a chance to see all these again before we contemplate starting over. That brings us to committee reports. As usual, I think people have been active in, there's been a few committees meeting since the last time. Kathy, do you want to start us off? I think TCHOC has met.
Yes. TCHOC met last Tuesday. Unfortunately, that was the day of the snowstorm. And so we met on Zoom, but we were going to have a primer on how financing of affordable housing works. So I think we'll have that later. They were not able to travel understandably on that day. But we did set out an agenda for the next several meetings and we will begin our oversight over the spending that's already happened of CPA money by the NHA, you know, Housing Authority on our next meeting and then look to produce a report on how we have so far completed our charge for the select board in mid-March.
Okay. I look forward to that. I know one of the questions that I keep asking and maybe your primer would have helped with that is it, I know at one point we did some looking at what the Cambridge Housing Authority was spending on their projects and it seemed like they were, they were putting much less money from their CPC funds than we have been asked for. And they had more projects and bigger projects. So we're trying to figure out, well, how do they get the rest of their funding? Right? So I'm hoping that will become clear to us with some more understanding. Kevin?
Climate action. We had a meeting and we discussed revisions to the roadmap report, adding metrics, and also discussed transportation and food waste issues. We're updating priorities. There are vacancies. We talked about the reforming the committee after it expires. And then there was an update on the planning board's solar bylaws. They were very interesting. Somebody got a little frank and candid, but it was really interesting. More to come.
More to come. So, but fundamentally, Kate had asked at what point the board would be ready to vote to approve and support the climate action plan. We are expecting that there will be one more turn of that and I don't think we know exactly when we expect it back, but Cecilia might remind me, the, our consultant is available to work, I think, through the end of February, sort of. So it will happen sometime really within the next month, we would expect to have a version back. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Has branding met?
Meeting tomorrow.
Meeting tomorrow.
Right.
All right.
Okay, well, Hone has met about a thousand times since we last met in so many versions. But of note, we held our second public forum on January 18th in Powers Hall. There were over 300 attendees, both in person and online. We were able to make a nice presentation with a survey that referenced that presentation, that, that presentation and the survey are both available on our website. You can, you can still do it. There is still time. It does close tomorrow though, so get on it. Don't, don't wait. We heard a lot of public comment. Public comment was actually the majority of the public forum. I would say that the majority were fairly supportive of the effort and part of what we wanted to, to do is see which version, we had three compliant versions of our maps, and see where people sort of fell out, where they felt, what they felt was the right size for Needham in terms of additional units zoned. So we're going to be compiling all of the issues raised and the survey answers into both a discussion at our next meeting, which is going to be Monday night, so tune in, but also into a survey document. And also the comments and issues that were raised will be compiled into an FAQ that will eventually live on our website. Again, the presentation and the survey are available, you can see the presentation on the Needham channel website, and then also the, the presentation and the survey are on the town website. You can also continue to email public comment to planning@needhamna.gov. And if you still, if there are still any of our paper surveys out there circulating, if you want to drop those off, you can drop those off to the Office of the Town Manager or to the Planning Department, which is located at the Public Services Administration Building down by the DPW in the reservoir. And in addition to that meeting, which I personally felt was really very successful and I enjoyed, we also had a meeting today with the Council of Economic Advisors and invited group of diverse commercial and residential developers who operate in Needham to get an understanding from them of what's required or what they feel is necessary to make development attractive. In Needham's case, for, for the MBTA communities, we're talking about a lot of redevelopment. And so understanding what, what attracts a company to a project like that is really crucial to making sure that we end up with some housing production. And so we wanted to get their input. Their input won't determine what we eventually zone, but it's really good information and helps us to make our decisions. So we appreciate their participation today. Also today, I met in a sort of impromptu fashion with the current events online group from the senior center. There is a large group of seniors who are very interested and wanted a little assistance with their surveys, but also to hear just generally about the Hone project. And so I met with them online for about an hour this morning and had a pretty thorough discussion of all the issues. We'll be, I will be going back there in short order. Just one more thing. The next public forum is scheduled for March 7th here at Powers Hall. So again, this will be the same kind of deal. You can show up in person or you can sign up online and information about that will be going out soon. In between now and that public forum is really when most of the hard decisions are going to have to be made with regard to our final version of this map and the plan that will be submitted to HLC, the, thank you, Housing and Livable Communities State Office. So if you have feedback that you haven't yet shared, now is the time. The decisions need to be made. This map needs to be made. Our zoning article needs to be planned out before we deliver our plan to HLC at the beginning of April. So now is the time and March 7th is our last planned public meeting prior to handing over this whole design to the planning board, which will start holding its public hearings probably in the early fall. Early fall is going to be a very busy time because there's a lot of elections coming up. So if you have input, now is the time. Major changes can't really be made further down the line. So please give us a buzz, contact us, come to the meeting, join us online at any of our meetings or the public meeting.
It is a process to get to an approved plan by December 31, 2024. So I know this feels to people like it's a long time in advance, but the answer is when the plan has to be approved by the state and it's mandatory that you have a plan that complies with the requirements, it's a process to get there. And so we are all engaged in that process. We appreciate the, actually hundreds of residents who have joined us in doing this work and appreciate that time and attention to getting this to a successful place because housing has been a priority for the community. And I think engagement actually shows that it is something that the community is interested in, being sure they understand and would like to figure out how they can successfully or support something that will be successful in the down of Needham. So I, it, I did make it online for climate. I can't remember. I was online for climate, I think. And then yesterday, it was just yesterday, we met with the Quiet Zone Committee. I know that people who are on the list for safer, quieter Needham did see an update after that meeting from Lars, who sits on the Quiet Zone Committee as well. We are, continue to do work on the Quiet Zone. There are, there is outreach underway to get together with the MBTA and KIOLIS. We saw maps and some potential plans and understood about the risk reduction that would take place by adding quad gates at each of the various crossings. We also looked at adding the medians and considered the impact of adding medians. It does make it even safer, but it remains to be seen what the various costs of those different options are. And it does look as though the quad gates are more than sufficient to make a significant risk reduction compared to where we are today. What is also clear is that the solutions, it's clear that the solutions continue to be very unclear for our private grade crossing at the golf course. And the golf course cannot be included formally as part of our Quiet Zone, but we are trying to work to engage MBTA and KIOLIS to understand what agreements we can come to with them for reductions in train noise at that crossing. It will, it will come under a different framework than the federal Quiet Zone that we're seeking relief from, but we will pursue both of those. Meanwhile, we're hoping at the next meeting for the committee to have, which occurs next month, to hopefully have some better insights into what current costs are for these. There were some numbers that were generated by the federal framework that appear to be magical. We don't think they bear a relationship to current pricing at all. So we are working to get that pricing and there has been a placeholder that's held, as you know, in the capital plan, and we expect to be able to use those placeholder dollars toward beginning to accomplish this goal, which will take a few years to accomplish to get through all the intersections. Karis already talked about how many millions of dollars of work is in front of her group already. So just trying to lay all that out so that it can be managed. But we are underway in making progress and I know that people will be grateful if we can get a reduction in noise. That's what people would like. Okay. Have I missed any committees? Not at the moment. Okay. Is there any other business or any other comments that people would like to make? If they, there are not, you all know what time it is.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a motion, unless you want to stay here.
We can stay.
Adjourn.
A second then.
I don't see the rush.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No one. Five zero. We are adjourned.
This is the biggest dad joke ever.